Meeting to order, roll call please.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lazzara.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor police.
Here, I declare a quorum present, please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with equal justice for all.
First, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of city council meeting October 4th, 2012. So move. The motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I get four right now.
Eugene and Joe. Questions, corrections, comments? Roll call.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Lazzara.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on items not listed on the agenda? Yes. If you can go to the podium, state your name, please. Oh, the microphone's set up.
Is that better? Okay.
Yes.
And so, what happens if I'm connected? What's going to occur?
Mr. Manager.
You won't be fined or anything like that, the goal of the program is for compliance. So the inspectors would go in, tell you what you would need to come into compliance and yeah, the goal is to help the citywide system from having problems. So it's not a fine issue, it's a compliance issue.
And how much time is usually given for compliance?
Uh, we're pretty lenient as far as an exact time, it's not like it's, you know, next week. Um, I would believe it would be months, um, so you would have quite a bit of time.
Is it possible to discharge water to the front of the house?
Uh, that you'd have to get in touch with our building department on, um, building department director John Forrest, he's not here tonight. He could help you more than than I can with you at this point in time.
Can I talk about the, the airplane noise over my house, or is that not something I can talk about?
Sure.
Between the hours of approximately nine and, let's say, 11 o'clock, the noise has gotten worse by me. Um, I've, I've called the number and let them know that it's happening, but it's ever since about, about two months ago, it's been getting louder. And I don't know if it's because that they're, that they're working on O'Hare's project that is happening, or it's going to be something that I'm gonna see more and more and get worse.
Okay, actually, O'Hare Noise Commission is here tonight to give a little presentation. We'll wait till the presentation, if you'd like to stay for that.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Pat. Sure. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Next written communiques, I have one. It's, uh, Wooddale Historical Society sends a thank you for the donation of $300. And then the other thing is Veterans Breakfast at Salt Creek on November 10th at 8:30. Just a reminder. Oh, and there's a volunteer sheet going around for the, for the council. Serve call, all right, thank you. All right, next is mayor's report. First, we have Eagle Scout proclamation for Daniel C. Wigan. Another, uh, fine member of Troop 65. We've seen the, you guys seem to crank him out over there, do a good job. Daniel, if you'd like to meet me at the podium? Before, before I read the proclamation. Actually, we'll do that first and then we'll put you on the spot, how's that? Eagle Scout Daniel C. Wigan. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of your, our youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others. And whereas one of the major objectives in the scouting program is to develop citizenship through community involvement and in addition to working for citizenship merit badges. Scouts are encouraged to participate in community service projects. And whereas Daniel C. Wigan is a member of Boy Scouts of America and has not only proven himself to be an outstanding member, but has attained the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award. And whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and committed this young man has shown. Now therefore, I, Mayor of Nunzieto Police, recognize Daniel C. Wigan as worthy of this highest honor and encourage him to continue his commitment to excellence. In testimony where I have set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of Wood Dale this first day, November 1st, 2012. I'm nervous too. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. And just so everybody knows, Daniel had to do a project to achieve this award. Would you like to speak on that? Go ahead.
Yeah, one of the main requirements to get eagle is to do a project to help out our community. For me, I did this at Oakbrook School. It's an elementary school on Wooddale Road. They recently got a new, uh, pavement in their parking lot. And on the blacktop, I decided to paint a 18 by 27 foot, uh, map of the United States of America. And this would help the kids with like geogra- geography games and things like that. And, uh, we made it like colorful and then, uh, actually made like a little game that kids could play, which was little pieces that have the initials of the states. And we, uh, put those together and that was my project for Eagle Scout.
Now I'd like to call the police chief up, he has something else for you.
I won't read this whole thing, uh, I'll, I'll share it for you, for you to read, but, uh, no, we'd just like to recognize, uh, uh, you know, be- becoming an Eagle Scout is a, a big commitment to service to your community. And, uh, we, we, we believe strongly in that and, uh, so to recognize that achievement, uh, it's a plaque recognizing the, the hard work you've done from the police department, so congratulations. Thanks.
And your name also goes up on the plaque. Next is the, the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission. Jeanette, are you gonna give this, or is Erin? Then Erin? Okay. Hold, hold on a second, chief, could you check the mic? Jeanette?
Okay, I'll start with the short overview of how ONCC came to be and what ONCC offers communities impacted by aircraft noise. In 1996, when then Chicago Mayor Richard M. Daley invited suburban communities to work together to help resolve O'Hare Airport noise issues, many mayors were skeptical. However, most agreed that by joining together, they could make a difference in the quality of life for their residents. Today, ONCC is recognized as a global leader in aircraft noise mitigation and has representatives from 28 communities including Cook County and 16 school districts. ONCC oversees the O'Hare School Sound Insulation Program and it's one of the largest and oldest programs in the world. I'm having trouble. There we go. Over 3 million in federal and airport funds have been allocated to sound insulate 119 schools with four more schools in process. Under the School Sound Insulation Program, five Wood Dale schools have been sound insulated, providing students with a better learning environment. The FAA mandated in its 2005 Record of Decision that the ONCC oversee the sound insulation of single and multi-dwelling units within the 65 DNL contour. Sound insulation is to be completed by the completion of OMP. Eligible homes are identified within the FAA 65 DNL noise contour. ONCC members work closely with partner, a leading aviation organization and Next Gen Advisory Committee, which is composed of public and private aviation stakeholders. They address issues pertaining to FAA's effort to modernize its O'Hare, its air traffic control system. The committee also works with air traffic control staff to ensure that controllers provide pilots with nighttime abatement procedures by observing the voluntary fly quiet program. The fly quiet program encourages pilots and air traffic controllers to use designated nighttime preferential runways and flight tracks developed by the Aviation Department in cooperation with ONCC, the airlines and air traffic controllers. Nighttime preferred routes are intended to direct traffic over less populated areas such as forest reserves, highways, commercials, and industrial areas. ONCC members receive quarterly reports that detail data regarding nighttime use, flight operations, flight tracks, and ground run-up. The technical committee reviews the Chicago Department of Aviation's Airport Noise Management System, which collects, analyzes, and processes data from several sources. There are 33 permanent noise monitors, three of which are located in Wood Dale. The City of Chicago and ONCC use these monthly data reports to facilitate and development of management of noise abatement programs at O'Hare. These reports are available on our website, oherenoise.org. ONCC also partners with the Chicago Department of Aviation's Community Outreach Vehicle at local events and festivals. Here, visitors have the opportunity to board the COV, discuss noise mitigation with aviation experts, and view computer-generated flight paths over specific neighborhoods. More than just noise, working with the FAA, ONCC has facilitated the efforts of four community members to receive close to 2.25 million in federal land use grants. In fact, Wood Dale was one of those communities to use the funds to develop a master plan for the Thorndale Corridor. ONCC meetings are open to the public and the public is welcome to attend. The next ONCC meeting will be held on November 9th at Fountain Blue in Displanes, Illinois at 8:00 AM. With 15 years of success, successful noise mitigation and noise abatement efforts behind us, ONCC members today are striving to ensure that homes within the 65 DNL full build-out contour are sound insulated before new runways are commissioned. The next runway to be commissioned is runway 10 Center, 28 Center on October 17th, 2013. This is a milestone for OMP when it completes its Phase 1. And now it is my pleasure to introduce Assistant Commissioner Erin Frame from the Department of Aviation. Erin will discuss the O'Hare Residential Sound Insulation Program Phase 16, which includes Wood Dale homes.
Good evening, everyone, it's my pleasure to be here. What I'd like to do for you is give you an overview as to how homes are determined to be eligible for the program. Uh, and then I'm gonna walk you through, uh, which Wood Dale neighborhood is, uh, next on the list. We're very pleased to come back to Wood Dale and do more sound insulation for you. So let me take you through an overview. The graphic that you're seeing on the screen is showing you, the purple line, uh, is showing you the noise contour. And so the basic rule is that if a home is located inside the noise contour, it is getting a significant amount of noise and the FAA tells us that we need to take steps to, uh, improve that quality of life, that home needs to be sound insulated. When the EIS, uh, the Environmental Impact Statement for the OMP was approved in 2005, uh, that was a very, very large document, all said, that was a 10-volume, uh, Environmental Impact Statement, which was quite remarkable for the size and the complexity anywhere in the country, especially in the airport world. The analysis showed that, once we put the runways into this primary east-west flow configuration with two diagonal runways, or what we call crosswind runways, once we put the airfield in that orientation, the result was that there were 6,000 homes all the way around on all sides of the airport. And so the FAA said, yes, you can expand O'Hare and modernize it and you are hereby mandated, you must sound insulate these homes. So what we've done on this chart is to show you, um, all of the neighborhoods and for our own internal purposes, these, these groupings, um, and in Wood Dale, we have Wood Dale 1 and Wood Dale 2. Those are our internal groupings, they do not correspond in any of the communities. They do not necessarily correspond with your neighborhood breaks, they're just geographic, um, dividing lines for us. The, the chart on the right shows you, we took the 6,000 homes and divided those in two halves and it was very much corresponding to the sequence of the runways on the airfield. So this box at the top was the first 3,000 homes and one neighborhood down here labeled WD1, Wood Dale 1, um, we did, uh, somewhere around 100 homes. And that's this neighborhood over here, um, in Wood Dale. What's exciting, um, I hope for all of you, is that it's time to come back to Wood Dale. Each year, the Noise Commission approves which homes are going next. It's very important to the Chicago Department of Aviation that the Noise Commission has a very active role in determining which homes are next. We very much don't do all the Chicago homes first, as a matter of fact, some of the Chicago homes are gonna go last. Um, it's very important for us to get, uh, consensus from the surrounding communities. And for that reason, each year, uh, we try to do some homes on the west side of the airport over here and we try to do some homes on the east side of the airport. And we're generally doing, um, some kind of a rotation, but the rotation is very much tied to the sequencing of the runways. So what we're gonna do is this neighborhood down here, Wood Dale 2, we have, um, approximately 350 single-family homes and I think that's a 30-something, um, multifamily homes, which could be condos or duplexes or apartments. Uh, and so that's a neighborhood here, all of these homes are north of Wood Dale Road and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that. So that gives you a sense of which homes are eligible. Uh, you can see that we're doing homes in Wood Dale, in Bensonville, we've got some unincorporated DuPage up in here. We have four areas of Schiller Park. The noise contour does go to Norridge, but all of those homes were primarily done under previous noise contours over the last 15 years. We did the Displanes neighborhood, we're doing work in Rosemont right now. Uh, we've got a pocket of unincorporated Cook, as well as four neighborhoods in Chicago and three neighborhoods over here in Park Ridge. Go ahead. Okay. This is an example of what our noise, uh, resolution looks like. Each year when we recommend, we, the department, recommend to the Noise Commission the next group of homes, a formal re- uh, resolution is introduced at the Residential Sound Insulation Committee level, where we have active discussion about that. Uh, this is what that looks like, um, and so that's been sent to all of you and of course, Jeanette can give you copies if you're looking for details on all the legalese, but this is a very standard resolution for us. I will tell you that one of the great things, um, that we have been able to do over the last few years, since 2001, we have had what's called the block rounding policy. Um, can you go back a slide? When the noise contour is curved, it's very logical that that noise contour is gonna cut a block in half. And the good news is that since 2001, we have a policy where we round out the block. If part of the block is inside the contour, we do not leave the other half of the block high and dry. We purposely go beyond the boundaries of the noise contour to finish that block. The challenge though, is always, we finish that block and the next block is completely outside the contour and that's where we stop. I think the benefit of block rounding is that, over the last 11 years and for the years continuing, we have the ability to sound insulate hundreds of extra homes in all of the communities. And all of the communities benefit from block rounding because nobody has a perfect street grid in their community. So we do this equitably and we've been doing it for 11 years and the CDA and the FAA both, um, you know, are gonna plan to continue that policy. So that's the beginning of the resolution, that's the end of the resolution. I do wanna draw your attention, um, this is sort of the focus of my presentation tonight. We divide, um, the groups of homes in, uh, each year. Because we had 6,000 homes, that's a very, very high number, um, we're generally splitting the 6,000 homes into six 1,000-home groups. And so those groups get names, um, we had one nomenclature system and now we've shifted and so the next group of homes is what we call Phase 16. It's the 16th grouping of homes that we've done since the program started in 1995. So this graphic is showing you which neighborhoods we're gonna do. We're gonna do the Bensonville 3 neighborhood, Schiller Park 3 and 4, and we're gonna do Wood Dale 2. And so by initial counts, we're looking at somewhere around 389 homes or to be more precise, dwelling units. For us, a dwelling unit, um, could be a single-family home or if it's a duplex, we count a duplex as two homes or however many in the condo or the apartment building. So we do believe that we've got 389 homes here in Wood Dale to do. Go ahead. All right. This is a different version of that block of 6,000 homes, where we had 3,000 in the top and 3,000 in the bottom. This is showing you how the homes were divided up and sequenced. So all of the green homes are done. Here's an example where in Schiller Park 1, we have a box that says "not applicable." It's because that neighborhood did not have single-family homes, it was a, um, multifamily neighborhood. And so for our purposes, we just blocked that out so as not to confuse anyone. It is important that the, that you know that those homes in Wood Dale 1 are done. And what we're doing right now is we just finished the O'Hare 2009 program year. Uh, yes, it's 2012 and no, we don't like the fact that we just finished the 2009 homes in 2012. So my bosses agreed and the Noise Commission agreed, we've gotta stop using that terminology. And so the next program year was the first one where we switched the naming scheme and so now we're talking about Phase 15. Phase 15 finishes all of what we call the OMP Phase 1 homes and you can see that we have Phase 15 here, but we also have quite a bit of Phase 15 down here in Bensonville and Rosemont. Uh, Phase 15 is in construction now. In my office, I always like to have one phase in construction, another phase in design, and a third phase in planning. And that's why we're here, because we're getting ready to go into the design phase on Phase 16 and that's the phase that affects Wood Dale. And you can see that here, um, on the graphic, we're showing the Phase 16 neighborhoods in blue and that's here for Wood Dale. And just for your in- information, the last homes to be done will be the Park Ridge 3 and the Chicago 4. And those are all, uh, north of the Kennedy and generally near the Kennedy and Higgins, probably around Cumberland and Harlem. Okay? Okay, so I think this is probably what's most interesting to you. This is a zoom of the neighborhood, um, the number we came up with of 389, uh, let me sort of walk you through it. This dark blue line is the noise contour, homes that are north of the contour are inside the boundary for our sound insulation program, that's great. And you can see here on the bottom of the graphic, here is Irving Park Road and here is Wood Dale Road. So all, this whole neighborhood is between, um, looks like Edgewood and Wood Dale Road and they're all north of Irving Park. All the homes up here north of Stonem Street, is that how you say it, Stonem? Stonem Street? These homes should have already been done. Okay, these are probably the ones that we did a few years ago. Uh, there are some homes over here as well. You're not seeing them because presumably they're already done, we don't wanna clutter, clutter the screen. Uh, so all the blue dots are the new ones that are Phase 16. This is what I was telling you before, where we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, almost 7 to 8 blocks that are being cut because, uh, this, uh, noise contour is a diagonal. So what we do is we go ahead and finish every single one of these blocks and then when there's a street blake, street break and we get to a different block, then we stop. And that's been the policy for 11 years. Okay? Um, so again, all these homes between Wood Dale Road and, uh, Edgewood, uh, north of Irving Park. Okay? Next, is that it? Okay. So that's sound insulation, let me take you a little bit back, um, to OMP and then we'll, uh, feel free to answer any questions that the council may have. Um, this is us, an overview of O'Hare, here is the terminal core. This runway extension was done in the fall of 2008. And in November of 2008, about three years ago, sorry, four years ago now, this was the north runway that was done in the north air traffic control tower so that the controllers can physically see all points of the runway. What we're working on right now, that Jeanette mentioned, is called runway 10 Center, 28 Center. This is the runway that will be commissioned next October in about a year. And so next week at the Noise Commission, we will, uh, be doing a presentation for the Noise Commission as a whole. The reason why we did some of the Wood Dale homes a couple years ago, as this runway got extended, um, this runway was anticipated to have an increase in usage and so as, I'm sure many of you are aware, um, this runway serves for arrivals and departures. Um, so we felt like, uh, several years ago, it was important to get started on those homes in Wood Dale 1 that I mentioned earlier. And we're coming back, um, not so much because of runway 10 Center, but because of runway 10 Right. And let me show you on this graphic over here. Um, 10, 10 Right, um, is gonna hit, um, you know, this part of the southern region and 10 Center is gonna hit sort of the middle Wood Dale. Now, remember that the noise contour is an annual average and it's sort of like ripples in a pond, there are many layers of noise. So think of other noise contours that we're not showing, as you go in towards the airport, the noise gets worse. So inside, you'd see the 66 DNL, the 67, the 68 DNL. We always tell people that are outside the noise contour, yes, you get noise, we know that. The challenge is, is that we have to do everybody inside the noise contour at the 65 decibel or the 65 DNL level. Those are the ones that nationwide, this was, the, the number has been set by Congress in its federal law. Anybody that lives inside the 65 DNL is considered to receive significant noise impacts and these are calculated on an annual average. So clearly, um, there are other neighborhoods in Wood Dale that are experiencing aircraft noise and, and we do know that. But the good news is that for some of those neighborhoods, we are able to offer sound insulation and, and I think that's very good. All three of these images are the same thing, it's just different levels of zoom. Uh, this is the closest end so that you can see the details on the runway and the timing. This runway will open next October, the runway after that is what we call 10 Right, 28 Left. This is on the south airfield, um, and this is, uh, part of why Irving Park Road had to move south. This runway will come online in the fourth quarter of 2015. The north airfield work has been deferred until the city can work out a completion timeframe with the airlines. Um, but we are gonna extend this runway and then build the last of the east-west runways. When the OMP is done, the two yellow runways will go away, but we will keep these two black diagonal runways. Okay? And again, this is the same thing, uh, same runway color scheme with the noise contour, just zooming out a little bit so you can get some perspective. And then we've zoomed out even more so that you can see the location of the 33 permanent noise. And then we've zoomed out even more, so that you can see the location of the 33 permanent noise monitors and where those are placed. Go ahead. I think this is the last slide, right? Yes. So this is the last slide. This is a little hard to read, because this green is very vibrant, and there are actually numbers in white. Each arrow, whether it's a green arrow or a red arrow, has two numbers. There's a white number, which is a percentage during the daytime, light for daytime, dark numbers, black numbers being nighttime, and that's explained here in the legend. All of the things we have for you tonight, Jeanette and I can give you additional copies or handouts, so don't feel like, you know, you're missing it. But the reason why I wanted to show this, this is a fact sheet that we use all the time for ONCC purposes. It's telling you that this Runway 10 Left is expected to get 50% of the nighttime departures, and that's one of the reasons why we have to do sound insulation in Wooddale. This runway, not so much, and this runway, not so much, departures to the west. The same runway, and again, that's because of this runway, the existing 1028, which will be renamed 10 Left, 28 Right, it will be the longest runway at O'Hare. And certainly, the airlines always love extra pavement. So there's a percentage of nighttime arrivals heading to the east, a little bit of usage here, and hardly any here. All right? So with that, I'm going to open the floor. So if anyone has any questions for me or for Jeanette, please feel free to ask. Alderman. Oh, Mayor.
We'll start with the residents first. You have to step to the microphone again, sir. Hey, Aaron, yeah, if you sit over, Aaron, you can sit over here at the table. Thank you.
I'm not in the 65 DV when I went to the website, showing that I'm outside of it. And I do know that this is the runway that's going to be the one that's replacing Irving Park, that'll be impacting me the most, because it's one, the flight path is one block from me. Now, being that these got all the soundproofing here, you know, all the homes affected by here got soundproofing, but this one here, there's nothing showing, there's been soundproofing. I don't think that the map's right, in that it's not covering those, even though you say that the EIS that covered those things. Like I mentioned, I'm getting noise now at night, which, you know, I start at 6:00 AM, so when I go to bed, the planes are flying over my house. And this just happened recently. Now, I don't know if that's because they're working on O'Hare now, that I'm getting these diverted flights or not, but it is making me think, saying, well, if I hear that noise now, how is it going to be when 10 Right, 28 Left comes in to be? I think soundproofing should cover our particular area, because we're going to be impacted, just like the people that are north of Irving Park. So I think it's a little unfair that it wasn't covered at all. Now, once O'Hare is fully built out, do they come back and say, okay, there's now more noise there now, so we're going to cover those homes, or are we just out of luck?
Can you respond?
Absolutely. Thank you for the questions. Those are good questions. There are two or three points that I wanted to respond to. Could we go back a slide? Is that microphone on? Is it on? Okay. So you are correct in that the noise contour is not the same from one runway to the next. And I think this graphic is, helps us see that. What happens is the percentage of use, on the next page, really has a factor in determining the shape of the noise contour. In particular, this lobe of the contour is very long and narrow. Narrow lobes of the contour, such as this and this, are indicative of heavy arrival paths. And specifically, this contour, this portion goes out, because all the nighttime flights, which is one of the issues you raised, nighttime flights always have a penalty of 10 decibels. One nighttime flight is equal to 10 daytime flights. So the noise model does account for that. I think the reason why the noise contour doesn't go farther west or farther south is because of the percentages that this runway is going to do. This runway on the very south is very much a mirror image of what's on the north. Go ahead. And this chart tells us kind of what's going on with the percentages. This number in white is very hard to read, but I'll tell you on the handout, the number is 2.7% departures taking off to the west. So because the daytime numbers are 2.7 and 0.9, and then this number is essentially averaging to zero, so they're anticipating very few departures at night, and this is very similar. This tells me, these numbers of zero departures during the night and zero arrivals during the night, are telling me the FAA does not plan to use that runway at night. That's very consistent with what happens on the airfield up here. This runway essentially is shut down every night, and they resume air traffic first thing in the morning. I know that that may not be the answer you were looking for. There is a method to the madness of the noise contour. As I said, the percentages that the runways get used is, very heavily influences the shape of the noise contour.
But you look at what's happening over in Park Ridge right now, which you said, the same runway, it's the same length, and usage, it looks like about the same here. And they have lots of people saying that the noise is way too loud to keep them up at night and everything, and it looks like you intend to soundproof some of them on Phase 17, from what I saw there, or Phase 16, whichever one it was.
Correct.
But is that going to resolve those issues with those people that are being affected?
No. And to be honest, Park Ridge is having a little bit of a tough time. We were not fortunate enough to go talk to them, as we are here talking to you in advance of the runways. Park Ridge is having a challenge. Here on the map, you can see that Park Ridge is sort of long and skinny. And so this section of Park Ridge that's on the new runway flight path, they're very frustrated, because they're on, when these arrivals come in from the lake, they're coming due west and they're landing here. But this noise contour stops here, and so all the residents that live in Park Ridge on this flight path, they are frustrated. The homes that I'm able to do in Park Ridge are down here in Southern Park Ridge. This is sort of following the Kennedy. Somewhere between Harlem and Canfield and Cumberland, we're sort of touching that border down there. So again, not everybody in Park Ridge is happy. To be honest, Northern Park Ridge is getting relief, because this diagonal runway is used less. Central Park Ridge is having a tough time, and Southern Park Ridge is getting sound insulation. There's one other question that you asked about, which is, are we going to redo the noise contour? And the answer is yes. When the FAA approved the environmental in 2005, they said, when the OMP is done, you are required to rerun the noise contour. We've rerun the noise contour several times over the last 30 years. We've actually done 30 years of noise contours at O'Hare, but it is absolutely a requirement. When everything is built, we have to go back and redo the noise contour. And that's sort of a periodic check-in as to, you know, was the prediction correct? This is all, this noise contour is based on future noise. These runways are not built, so this noise contour is not based on what's happening today. When this federal government approves it and gives you funding to help with the sound insulation, they expect you to be working toward a future goal, making quality of life for these residents better by the time these runways come online. And so this is very much a projection, and they are requiring us to go back and revisit that noise contour, to see how accurate was that projection? And if the noise contour changes shape and we have to pick up additional blocks, we will do so and keep the program going.
To me, it seems like when you look at the contour that affects Park Ridge, how you have that huge blip that goes out where you said you can't help those people right now. It would seem like 2010 R, 28 Left would get that same blip, because they were said that they wouldn't use the Park Ridge runway much. And then it turned out that they use it a lot more than they planned on. And once they build the second or the third tower here, they're probably going to use it a lot more, cargo, because cargo is located all around there, and cargo flies at night.
There are several things you said that interested me, but let me answer one or two in the interest of time. I will tell you that, as I said, Park Ridge is having trouble, because all these people live on the flight path, they're certainly getting noise, but they don't get enough noise to qualify for the sound insulation. And, you know, we've talked to them about that, and we have recurring dialogue. The only thing I'll say about the runway utilization is, this, you can see this is very close to the runway, so these percentages, again, are really what's driving it. I talked about how the narrow lobes are indicative of arrivals, the wider lobes like this are indicative of departures. Can you go one slide? So one number is that, this number here is a little difficult to see. This number is 27.7%. When the OMP is done, this will be a primary departure runway. So these, and that's because the airfield is designed to be in east-west flow. Much of the time in the Chicago metro area, the winds are from the west, and the pilots land their planes and arrive the planes into the wind. And if the predominant wind pattern is the west, that's why this is designed the way it is. So because of this 27%, what's happening? Go back. What's happening is when airplanes take off, they come here, and they could either bank to the north, or go straight, or bank to the south. So we have what's called a lot of dispersion among those, whereas on an arrival path, it's the same path every time. They're always coming in straight. This is example of more departure activity.
Okay, well, my own personal opinion is that cargo is going to use their closest runway as they can, because they want to save on fuel, and that's the southern runway. And so you're probably going to find out that it's going to be a lot more nighttime noise than what you thought on that, because they keep building cargo hangars down there, so it's going to change, I'm sure. My last comment is, we're going to become the next Park Ridge, and you're going to be getting lots of letters from us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, we very much don't want you to become the next Park Ridge, which is why we're here, a year in advance, to make sure that you're all informed and you all get the messaging from us.
Well, I know some of the aldermen that attend the meetings, and myself, we've been asking, who controls the pilots or the air traffic controllers? We finally got the answer, the air traffic controllers. I can tell you, once we know who our congressmen are going to be, we've already spoken to the people on the east from Chicago, and they both, them and us, would like to, because I guess Congress is the one that handles FAA, about turning some of these planes over industrial parks and the highways, instead of banking them left over the residence. And I, we have one more resident who'd like to speak.
My name is Patricia Stoll. I live at 145 South Cedar, here in Wooddale, which is basically Cedar and Murray on your maps. So I fall into that gap area. I guess I should live so long as to see some resolution to this, preferably a positive resolution. I don't think I'm going to last that long, frankly. I have made 83 phone calls, and they are documented with the confirmation numbers, the dates and the times that they were made. And each one of these phone calls that I have made to the 311 number represents not just one flight. I give each day a chance, like maybe it'll only be one flight, but what the gentleman before me was saying is very accurate. This covers a span of time, starting the first of this year through this last week. I'm getting to be old friends with some of the 311 operators. These represent multiple flights, and there is an increasing pattern, and most of these, by the way, are takeoffs. And they'll start maybe 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning, so that I can wake up to the airplanes going overhead. Low enough, I have a flat roof on my house with a mansard side. I think I'm going to paint a sign on that roof with my phone number, and if I get any phone calls, they're too low. Okay? They start early morning, and they will pick up again, so that I get to go to bed with Now, I've listened to what you've had to say, and I've gotten not one big bit of encouragement or positive hope out of this. You come with a program of insulating the house. By the way, my house has pillow windows, double glazed. Some of the windows have custom stained glass and are triple glazed, okay? You will not replace those windows. It's not part of how you do it, okay? I'll get the whole facade of the house redesigned, as far as the windows are concerned. They'll be standard operating, double-hung windows. You're going to soundproof my house with insulation, if I'm in any way lucky in your From my perspective, when I moved here 43 years ago, I moved to Wooddale for two things: peace and quiet from Des Plaines and Park Ridge. Oh, thank you, God. Okay? At least I had 43 years. And the second one was the trees and the country. Well, between O'Hare and ComEd, ComEd wants me to cut all the trees down, and O'Hare is going to build me into, I think another term for this is house arrest, isolation, compound prison. In other words, I'll be soundproofed from all of this if I stay in my house. But I won't have a backyard any longer that I can enjoy. And I certainly won't be able to stand outside and talk to anybody, even at arm's length, if there's a plane going over. And not once in all of this do I hear anything that O'Hare is going to do in, you talk about changing the flight patterns, okay, so that they don't come at night. Well, they are coming at night. I don't hear about anything like redirecting the flights over the commercial areas at night. If it is, it's not working. They're coming over my house, not just mine, the whole area, okay? There is a, I've gotten somewhat of an education. Do have relatives who are in the cabin crews, first officer, okay, on the flights. O'Hare is using something called a short-run takeoff. And I'm not quite sure this is legitimate, but I think you probably know what I'm talking about when I say short-run takeoff. No? Well, in other words, you've got a brand-new runway that's X-long, let's pick a figure, 1,000 feet, okay? And the traffic controllers stack up the airplanes in line, ready for takeoff on this runway, this 1,000-foot runway. But they use the first, I'm hypothetical now on my figures, 500 feet of this is nose-to-tail planes waiting to take off, which leaves number one plane 500 feet. And when they get to the end, and thank you, God, they are elevated, they're off the ground, but they're not very high over the ground, which accounts for why they're coming over my house, and periodically, a prayer goes up that they're not going into crash mode. They're just another low-flying plane, and the low altitude is due to the low, the short-run Now, that kind of thing has nothing to do with all of the bedazzlement of these maps. That has to do with how these takeoffs and landings That has to do with how these takeoffs and landings are being managed. Not once do I hear anything effective coming out of O'Hare with this. So I'm going to continue making the phone calls. But I don't think this town, I think this town is destined to go the way of what I moved away from 43 years ago. I believe, from anything you have said this evening, that what I can look forward to is just more of the noise. I don't think that, you know, that us reporting that the noise is increasing in the wee hours to you should be something new to you. It's like you're not aware of it. Well, I think that O'Hare generally, the management chooses to not be aware. So I register my complaints, and I will continue to do so. And if necessary, I am out there encouraging every single person I come across to make the complaints to the 800 number. And the one thing about that that I'm grateful for is that at least we get a confirmation number, that the complaint has been issued. I have not addressed the fact that it isn't just the noise, but when these planes go over, some of them are so low that the windows and the doors literally rattle. Not doing nice things structurally to the buildings around when this kind of thing goes on day after day, year after year. So it isn't doing any kind of thing to my property values. This last summer, I was at a picnic, mentioned, it happened to be in Palatine, with Palatine residents. We were the only people from Wooddale, mentioned that we were from Wooddale. Oh, gee, one of them spoke up and said, we were getting ready to buy a house in Wooddale on Foster. Looked at it three times, really liked it. Went back the fourth time and decided, no. The sale fell through. The planes were going over at the time that they stopped on the fourth visit. I don't even think O'Hare wants to buy my house at this point. I hear nothing that suggests that, and that would be the final sound barrier you would have no one to complain about. I think I've just about covered everything that I have to say, but that's, I don't see much hope. You have an answer for it?
Aaron? Thank you very much for your comments. Jeanette and I do try to work on multiple issues. I hear what you're saying about the noise impacts. I think the best thing, being myself from the airport and Jeanette representing the local communities at the Noise Commission, I think the best thing we can do is to make sure that everyone is informed. We at the airport measure the noise, and we publish these reports on a monthly basis. They're available on my website, and they're available on Jeanette's website. We will continue to work on nighttime flights. That's been a big focus this summer that Jeanette and I have been involved with. We know that the aircraft are not flying where we want them to, and that's something that we've had active discussions with the air traffic staff on, and that's sort of a focus where we are with recent projects. So I thank you very much for your comments.
Aaron? I think, actually, before Brendan resigned, I had mentioned something about the short runway takeoffs. And, you know, I never really got an answer then. He resigned, and Jeanette's kind of the interim. Can you get an answer on that?
Yes. Jeanette and I have coworkers in the building, and we can definitely get that for you.
Thank you. Any of the council members? Alderman Shawkey? One more resident?
Yeah, I'm confused about something. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Melissa Stoll from 145 South Cedar. And thank you. I know I had not stood up before to request speaking, but thank you for allowing me to speak right now. And I have been listening to the O'Hare representative speak, and frankly, I also hear nothing from you in any hopeful manner. I hear that you're taking complaints and you're focusing on nighttime flight issues. Well, that's only a sliver of the issues. And I also hear from you that it's just, there's nothing you can do or going to do. I hear really nothing out of you in resolution to any of this. And I thought I had just one question to ask concerning soundproofing. And I hear all about how you're soundproofing homes and how about, oh, I think it was 10 years ago, the first soundproofing was started here in Wooddale. I knew some of the residents on the north side of town who had received the soundproofing to their homes. But it does not address the issue of the property I live in isn't just a house, it includes a yard, and my yard is becoming unusable. And for, you know, all year round, whether it be winter, summer, spring, and because the noise is so bad that with the wonders of modern technology, where I don't have to use the hardline phone in my house, I can have a cordless phone or wireless phone and go outside and talk on my telephone outside, I can't do that here because the plane traffic is so bad. I can't simply enjoy the garden that I've been working on for the past 30 years because the noise is so bad. I can't have a picnic and guests over and a barbecue in my backyard because the noise is so bad. When are you going to soundproof my backyard along with the house? Because I don't want to be made a prisoner in my home as your answer to the noise issues of O'Hare Airport. And I also find your contour map very interesting because in this map, O'Hare in particular, the line goes almost directly over Irving Park Road, for which every day, there is a stack of planes coming in. And frankly, to me, with the plane traffic, it doesn't matter whether it's coming or going. It's X-high over the house, and the noise is the same whether it's coming or going. So this arrival-departure thing is a moot point. I wish the sound was a moot point, and it isn't. And I find it very interesting that with this line of planes that stacks up continually, one after another, flying down overhead on Irving Park Road, that that contour map, that it doesn't, that sound must only stay on the north side of Irving Park Road. I find that very interesting. I have a science background. I'd like to know how this works.
Absolutely.
And the, I, and also, why is it that none of the soundproofing over the past 10 years has happened south of Irving Park Road where that sound doesn't just stay north of Irving? And these contour maps are grossly inadequate. And I can't think of the word at the moment, but they're inaccurate as to what you say. And I see that there is apparently a noise monitor on the south side of Wooddale, and it's like, does it not work? That it's not picking up the equal amount of sound as a plane comes down Irving Park Road? I would think the sound disperses equally in all directions unless you have a typhoon wind that's blowing the Doppler, you know, effect to one side of the road. But it's crazy. And I hear no hope and no answers from you except, oh, keep calling and just, you know, we hear you. Well, that's not good enough. We need some answers and some resolution and some quiet in this town.
Well, I would like to respond to one question you raised. It's very important that everyone understand this noise contour is not a reflection of what's happening today. This is a future noise contour. This, these are the projected noise impacts when all of the runways are done. In the environmental impact statement that was approved seven years ago, and that everybody's been working under for seven years, there were three noise contours, and those were done to look at the noise impacts during the construction project. And so, but the one we use for sound insulation purposes is this one. This is the one that's shown.
And there'll be a new one once the project is complete.
Correct. And so that's a very important point that you're raising. What you're experiencing, the planes that you're seeing and you're hearing, you know, you cannot compare what's happening today to this line because this is, this is a future line when these runways are built. So what we do to check in on the here and now is we use all of these noise monitors to get the readings and report those back to everyone so that you have a sense of what are the decibels currently.
Yeah. Well, you've been posting this map of the contour map as if it's the here and now. And why don't you address what's hap, this is one more example of how this, you as representatives are not addressing the issues of this town. You're talking about something in the future that hasn't happened yet, and we're talking about the here and now and not...